And so with that said, the first person to speak will be April Moore.
Hello, April Moore, I'm a resident here in Kendallville. I just wanted to take a minute to talk to everybody about the parent square notification system. I love it so far. I love it even more that I can adjust those notifications to not get them multiple times per day. It was getting a little out of control. So I think it'll be a great thing for parents to be able to get some of that information that they're wanting in order to keep involved with their students in the school. I do understand it is kind of still a testing phase with the emergency, like the two hour delay today didn't go out with that. So I look forward to the teams being worked out. I think the delay today was just before the test run had been scheduled. So the fog kind of threw a kink in those corners. And again, I just think at the end of the day, parents are going to be involved or not. But I do appreciate the fact that you guys have given another way for parents to stay involved and stay informed about what's going on in schools. Thank you.
Greg Rice?
Good evening, Board, Mr. President. I would like to share with you a foundational principle that I think should have been employed regarding the books that are in question. Finally, brethren, whatsoever things are true, whatsoever things are honest, are just, are pure, are lovely, whatsoever things are of good rapport, if there be any virtue and if there be any praise, think on these things. That's Philippians 4:8. East Noble School Board and administrators apparently choose acceptance of sexually perverted cultural rot as the foundational principles that guided your votes to retain the book A Stolen Life, all but Mr. Krulov. This school board collectively proclaims itself as sexual assault therapists by claiming a student who suffered sexual assault can benefit reading the book A Stolen Life without giving consideration to the effects a student might experience who hasn't been sexually assaulted and reads the book. My logical question at the May School-sponsored town hall asking for data in support of your claims was met with hostilities from the superintendent and board member Klein. And it is all on video, so I'm not making anything up. Furthermore, all citizens in attendance at that town hall wanted answers to my questions. Everybody thought it was a logical question, except Dr. Grumo, board member Klein, and Doug Jansen. I was then threatened with eviction for quote, "asking something in public that should be asked in private," unquote. My question was deemed a personal attack. East Noble School Board's foundational principles seems to demand students to think on gross, deviant sexual activities. That's called sexualizing students. And parents, grandparents, taxpayers, if we oppose the board's decision to sexualize students, you can subject yourselves to tyrannical treatment, intimidation, and harassment by this board and administration. I think we can do much better, folks.
Mr. President?
Too many tragedies have occurred at East Noble under this board since this superintendent started. These tragedies don't have to happen. They shouldn't be happening. I consider these avoidable tragedies. I think we need to make East Noble safe again. To recent Grumo posting, we have been made aware of the recent arrest of a former employee, LaShawn Harris. We want to assure community that LaShawn is no longer employed with East Noble School Corporation. The safety and well-being of our students and staff is our top priority. Well, how disingenuous can you be? Right after a teacher is arrested for eight counts of child seduction, you immediately come in and say, "The children are your top priority?" Really? I have been warning this school board and this city about this very exact thing for years, and I've been ignoring it. I read at a board meeting, Wayne 15 News, "If you think teacher-student sex scandals are a growing problem in schools, a fort-wind psychologist says you're right. Pornography is much more widespread today than 20 years ago, which the psychologist thinks contributes to a more sexualized culture in both students and teachers." I've been warning you about this. And exactly what this psychologist says contributes to a more sexualized culture in both students and teachers. And it's exactly what your policies are aimed at and your actions do. It's shameful. It's disgusting. I also warned you about a teacher posting online that a board candidate wants to regulate whether I ask kids if I need to know something about their identity. Again, none of their business. Which is illegal in Indiana. What were the consequences? What did you do? Had you posted or published to all teachers a simple, straightforward notice, "Any teacher caught speaking with students about inappropriate sexual topics will be fired immediately." I can almost guarantee you that you wouldn't have had a Southside elementary teacher allowing transgenderism to be taught to second graders. If the students were your top priority, why haven't you done that? Did she get fired? Had she been fired, I guarantee you that would have sent a message to all the teachers in the entire school system that this should never happen. And it's almost guaranteed it would never happen again. But only if the students are your top priority. If you're serious about this, start taking actions in favor of the students.
All right, Board, in your packets were our minutes from the August 21st meeting. We've had a chance to go through those. Were there any questions from our minutes from the 21st? Do I make a motion to approve this presented?
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mr. Durbin, a second from Mrs. Blackman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Also, we're going to link a list of claims from September 18th. We've had a chance to go through those quite lengthy. Is there a motion to approve the claims as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the claims as presented.
We have a motion from Mrs. Blackman, a second from Mrs. Klein. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that moves us to personnel. In your packet, underneath resignations, retirements, and terminations, you have the following list there. We had some updates today. We had a chance to look through those. Questions about those?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mrs. Klein, a second from Mrs. Blackman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have reassignments. A couple that were in there. You saw those. Is there a motion to accept those two?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mr. Durbin, a second from Mrs. Klein for those two reassignments. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Then we have some new hires. We had that list there. We had a couple of new ones today. You have a chance to look through those.
Do I make a motion to approve what is presented?
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Mr. Durbin, a second from Mrs. Blackman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have no leave requests. Okay, that takes us to instruction. With parent-teacher conferences going on at high school, we scratched that along with some members of our board not here tonight. That'll be moved to our next meeting in October. So that takes us to our business portion of tonight's meeting. So, we have some EFT, I'm sorry, educational tours to the Amazon Rainforest and the Lindfog and Krakow and Budapest. Any, do you have any questions about that?
No.
Anything you'd like to add about that?
Just looking to approve our next round of trips. We want them earlier this time so that it gives students a longer window to raise money and save for it, so.
Okay, are the same people going to be?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the trips with EF tours.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Mrs. Blackman, a second from Mrs. Klein. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we also have some other field trips, not quite as exciting perhaps, but as exotic. We saw those in our packet. And obviously, those will be probably still trickling in throughout the course of the year as things, but we've got the bulk of those out there, so. Is there a motion to approve those? Is those what's just in our packet?
I'll make a mo-
Don't fight.
I'll make a motion to approve the field trips.
I will second that motion. You're welcome.
We have a motion from Mrs. Blackman, a second from Mrs. Klein. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries as presented. Okay. Also, we have an action to approve a memorandum of understanding between the East Noble School Corporation and the East Noble Education Association. If you remember, correct me if I'm wrong, with our preschool grant, those monies were allocated and have to be spent by May 31st. And if we don't spend them by then, we lose that, correct?
Correct.
And our teachers have to be paid by May 31st. Is that correct?
Two preschool teachers.
Two preschool teachers. And with the way the contracts are set up, those are, our two preschool teachers typically would be paid throughout the summer months. And because they have to be paid out by May 31st as a condition of the grant, we're entering into a memorandum of understanding to pay out before May 31st.
To modify the current bargaining agreement and to pay the final salary of wages and benefits out prior to the end of May, which is May 31st of 2025.
And that's just for the two preschool teachers?
For certified staff. There are also two instructional assistants as well that would fall in the category.
But they're not covered by?
But they're not covered by the category, correct?
All right. So, Board, do you have any questions about that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mr. Durbin, a second from Mrs. Klein to approve that commode view. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that takes us now, we're going to suspend our normal meeting and enter into the public hearing on the 2025 budget. I guess this becomes your opportunity to share a little about some money.
Yeah, so we'll open up the public hearing for the 2025 budget for East Noble School Corporation. The budget was advertised as required in EICode on September 5th on the DLGF website, as well as the East Noble School Corporation website, which is at least 10 days prior to tonight, which is the public hearing, September 18th. And then the budget adoption is anticipated for October 16th of 2024. So then, kind of go in through the budget. A lot of this is going to be the same, similar information we've presented and talked about in the past. It's just some different numbers and some different budgets and so forth. So there are five main funds that we've talked about budgeting tonight. There's the educational fund, the operations fund, the rainy day fund, the referendum debt, and the debt service fund. Really, we're only budgeting four of those. We're not budgeting anything out of the rainy day fund for calendar year 2025. So we move on. The next slide talks about 2019 when the state of Indiana kind of regrouped, reorganized fund categories for school corporations, eliminated the general funds, transportation fund, capital projects fund, bus replacement fund, and moved them into just two funds, the education and operations fund. The education fund is primarily teachers and support staff from the classroom, along with other support staff, instructional assistants, nurses, building administration, and so forth. And then also the operations fund, which was primarily the capital projects fund, transportation, bus replacement, and some district-level administration, along with custodial and so forth. So there were quite a bit of changes back in 2018 to start in 2019. But we've, for a few years now, I think we're pretty well ironed out. So we'll start with the education fund. The education fund, as we discussed in our discussions last week, or I'm sorry, last month, the budget is set at $28,777,058. This kind of shows how it's broken out. A little over $19 million, 18.1 roughly, is set aside for regular program, our generic classrooms, teachers, instructional staff, and so forth. You have vocational programming at about $372,000. Your SPED programming at about $1.9 million. That does not encompass other fellow grants that we receive for our SPED programs. We have remediation in summer school at about $337,000. Vocational transfer tuition, this would be like Impact Institute at $480,000. We pay basically tuition for our students to attend Impact Institute and receive education in those trades. Support services, nursing, counselors, and so forth, about $2.15 million. The curriculum and library, over $800,000. Your building level administration, over $1.8 million. And then your network support, your technology, both the staff and, I'll be there either to go on with it for our network, is the $1.375 million. And then our extracurricular activities, such as our coaches and so forth, is about $427,000. So that's a rough breakdown. Well, for the budget, the exact breakdown, the numbers I read were approximate of what makes up that $28 million dollars. So in talking about the $28 million, I mentioned a little bit later too, that is up from last year. Last year, we were just under $27 million. So total up above $1.89, as we talked about before, roughly $600,000 of that is, the state is limiting the book rental fund and then moving those expenses into the education fund. So at the end of this calendar year, we have to make those adjustments and move those in, so therefore we have a budget for the expenses in 2025. So the revenue of the state gives us to reimburse us for portions of what we used to fund through book rentals will be then receded into the education fund. So overall, the $1.8 million increase is a 6.7% increase. But in reality, it's about a 4.5% increase because if you pull out the book rental, it's $600,000, you have a 4.5%. So in the education fund, it does accommodate some additional staff that were hired. It also accounts for potential raises for 2025 calendar year. Next year would be a negotiation year for us, along with the association. And every, you know, May, June, we look at raises, potential raises for classified staff in our administrators as well. So those are taken into account when budgeting these funds. So as we move from the education fund into the operations fund, the operations fund has a problem.
Which one is mine?
That slide is not correct. That's the old one. The budget is actually $9,293,902, which is a difference, an increase of $4,6869, or 4.5%. So let's see if I can find this real quick. I apologize. Working on lots of spreadsheets. I can give you some of the numbers here, though. So the first category, the general administration, is actually $565,976,000. And then central office support, it'll be $662,933, operations and maintenance, in the tune of up $4.3, $4.4 million. Transportation will be $2.8 million. And then bus replacements, $680,000. And facilities is $893,000. So that's the breakdown. I'll get that amended. So I do apologize for that. I don't know how that slide. I don't know how that slide was made in there, but it was. So as we move then back through, the next slide, aiming, we'll show you the bus replacement at $680,000. East Noble budgets replace four 12-year-old buses. Two of them are 84-passenger, one is 72-passenger, and one is a special needs bus. In return, the EIC will purchase three 81-passengers, one special needs bus, at an estimated cost of $680,000. In which we did send a letter of intent to Perlin Bus Sales in order to kind of, there's our name in the lineup. I don't know if it's going to help, but it's not going to hurt. And, but it's all pending to a budget being approved as ever presented tonight, and the DLGFs approving the funds as well. So the reason we do the intent anymore is because, actually, next week, we're going to receive bus two and three of the purchases made in January of '23. We're still waiting for one bus from the '23 purchase. We haven't received any of the '24 buses. So we're trying to get ourselves in line. There's a huge lag industry-wide for school buses regardless of what manufacturer you go with. So that's the reason for the letter of intent. So as we move through the next slide, we advertise capital projects plan 2025, 2027. These are all listed on the website as well. This is just kind of a highlight of some of the items that we were looking at. Some are budgeted for, some are not budgeted for, but this is a list of things that, you know, have kind of been on on the bucket list of things either to do or need to be done. We always do district-wide asphalt, rough fencing, carport repairs, replacement. Looking to do some upgrades to the family consumer science class at the high school. Develop preschool playground installation. Actually, some of that will be happening this year. We are anticipating some of it next year, but there will be some additions to it as well. Construction of a new alternative learning center that's going to start this year, but then we'll also have some expenses also in 2025. District HVAC upgrades, wallpaper removal, LED lighting upgrades. We have not completed the high school, so the only two buildings we have not upgraded LED lights is Northside and Wayne Center. We'll start working on those again next year. Network and fiber upgrades, we constantly keep working with that. A lot of that, our tech department is really good at doing e-rate funds that help provide us additional funding for larger projects within the buildings that support our students. Scoreboard updates, lighting upgrades, turf replacements, track replacements at East Noble High School, fencing, reviews, upgrades, repairs, high school gymnasium upgrades, and potentially a high school greenhouse to replace the greenhouse that we have there again. Now, all those items are budgeted. Those are all things that are being discussed. The things that we talked about in our capital projects meetings when I and a couple others go around to all the buildings and discuss with building level administration on things that they, you know, would like to see or need to see, and so forth. So along with the capital project, we have to advertise capital acquisition plan for '25 through '27. So there's a list of items that may be purchased. Maintenance vehicle and some dollar amounts associated with it, $50,000. Scissor lifts, battling mower, server upgrades, floor scrubber, a regular mower, potential other sport boards, and then a groomer for baseball and softball fields. Along with other articulating lifts, mowers, just like our buses, maintenance vehicles, mowers, all need to be out of cycle, all need to be replaced to keep our maintenance down, our costs down. So again, the full list of those would be on the website. So that kind of concludes the operations budget. Then we move into the debt service fund. The debt service fund is going to be for general obligations funds. We currently have now two general obligations funds out there. One is for the transportation and technology center that finally paid off in December of '25. And then the new bonds that were sold on September 5th, which I'll talk about those in discussions a little bit, for the replacement of the ELC, the central office HVAC, will be paid off in December of '28. The estimated total of those are $1.78 million. That is an estimate because at the time this was put together and advertised, we didn't have all of the information for the new bonds to put in there. So these are estimates. That will be trued up once the information is put into Gateway, the state, DLGF review them, and then that will be trued up. So I believe you're going to see a lower number than the $1.78, once all that information is put in there. The other debt fund we have is the referendum debt. That's for East Noble Middle School. The reason the difference is because this went through a referendum and even the community voted for it. So when the community votes for it, it goes into a separate debt fund because it is not subject to the circuit breakers, not subject to the 1%, 2%, and 3% tax caps for residential, commercial, or mag ground. So the payments on that is $3,163,000 for 2025, and those bonds are due to be paid in December of 2033. To kind of recap, the funds that I mentioned before, the education fund, the difference is an increase of $1.8 million, which is 6.7%, but again, pull out the book rental, you're at about 4.5%. The increase of the operations fund, $4,600,000, which is roughly 4.5%. The debt service fund increases about $12,000. Again, that's an estimate. And the referendum debt is a flat. There is zero change in that. So going on to the next slide, it kind of shows the breakdown. The percentages of what each of those funds represent in the total funding for these four budgeted funds. 67% is for educational, 22% is operational, 7% is the referendum debt of middle school, and 4% is the GL bonds that will be supporting the completion of the transportation technology center, non-payoff, and the new alternative learning center, high school HVAC upgrades. So whenever you're talking about levies and budgets and debt, a major factor in all of that is the assess valuation. On this next slide here, this is a rundown of the assess valuation for East Noble School Corporation Omen. It goes back to 2015. You can see how it has grown over the years. The current assess valuation 2024 for pay 2025 is $1,539,541,340. So that shows you how our AV has grown over the past several years. So then when you think about that, how does that compare to the area districts? Next slide, you'll see that we're, in our surrounding districts, we are kind of right in the middle, right there with DeKalb. We are kind of right in the middle, right there with DeKalb and Westview. So the highest AV is Southwest Allen. The lowest AV is Garrett Kaiser Butler. The dots on there represent AV per pupil or per student enrollment. We don't really use that, but in the program that we use to get this information, that's, that's there. So that's what those dots represent. In the next slide, we'll show you the tax rates over the last several years. So the red in 2024 is the operations and is 43, 43.55 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. The operations, I'm sorry, the debt service is .0942. The purple is, is the other. The actual debt rate or the debt for 2024 is roughly 70 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. And I don't, I don't anticipate this being any more than that. With the increase of our assessed valuation, a lot of these have gone up about 4% and so forth. So we should see a very similar tax neutral, tax rate as we move into 2025. So you look at the tax rates on the next, and how, how does that rate compare to the other schools around us? Just like our AV, Garrett Kaiser Butler having one lower AV has the highest tax rate, a dollar eight cents, whereas Lakeland School Corporation has the lowest now, unfortunately, their district is in Noble County, so that's, that's part of that. But East Noble is the fourth lowest there, so we were 70.8 cents of assessed valuation. So that's where our tax rate ranks compared to, you know, other schools. Notable on here, DeKalb is at 80.7 cents, Central Noble is at 80.6 cents, and West Noble is just under a dollar, 99.9 cents. So that shows where our tax rate rates compared to those, really very close to us. So then the next slide is we are East Noble School Corporation, and the reason we do all of this is to get our kids to graduation, provide them with an education to make sure that they're successful, they can be, as the lead East Noble will go on to their choices of career. Other questions on the 2025 budget presentation? Again, I apologize for the one slide of the operation project.
Could you give that slide to us?
I can't.
Board, any questions? What was the renovations of the high school gym? Can you share anything about that?
They've just been taught, you know, painting, they've been talking of scoreboards, there's been talk of different signage, things like that. Nothing, nothing major from a structural standpoint, all more cosmetic. So if there are no other further questions, then we'll close the public hearing and resume the regular working.
Public comment, yeah. If you have questions. Any questions? What are they? Public comments regarding to just the budget? Yes, sir, John.
Could I also get an updated copy of what?
Thanks, I appreciate it.
I have a question. Do we know what the numbers are in terms of how many students total we've lost or gained from last year?
From the fall, and I'm going to go off my shot, let me pull it up. Last I checked, it was a day yesterday, I believe, and we were down, hold on, let me get it here. Right around 14 students.
How many?
14.
Okay.
Hang on here.
And that's in seats, right?
Down 16, well, our enrollment is down 16 students from last fall. We are up 15 and a half students from last spring. So we received approximately $7,033 per student, so it equates to a shortfall comparing to last fall, about $114,000.
Thank you.
Any questions?
My house? Okay, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing on the budget, and we'll move on. And that moves us to the last item on the business, and that would be to sell on eBay the list of obsolete items. Kind of a routine thing we do. We sell the things posted. Any questions about that? If not, more, take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion, Mrs. Klein?
Oh, second down?
Second, Mrs. Blackman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Okay, that takes us to discussion.
Yeah, first up on the list is Chromebooks versus iPads. I have a request from a board member to just bring this up and kind of go through it a little bit so you have an opportunity to talk about it, if you choose to do that. There are some reasons why we decided to make that change, and it was an ongoing conversation over several years. It was nothing that was a snap decision. Chromebooks are actually able to offer, and this is pre-K to two, or K through two, I'm sorry. I was just saying pre-K, so I'm sorry, but it's K through two, who received a Chromebook this year as opposed to an iPad. And they offer not only the laptop capabilities, but also a tablet. As you flip it over, it just becomes completely a tablet. One of the things about the iPads, they were eliminating the headphone capability, the with the jacks. And that is something that is utilized, the little earbuds and everything, but the wired ones on numerous apps that are available on that and assessments, so we needed that capability. Also, security software updates, automatically download when the Chromebook is turned on, so that's a real plus. And really, a majority of the Chromebooks come with some type of drop protection, water resistance, and spill proof for the keyboards, which is really important when you're talking to children or using them like that. So and also, if they do get damaged, there's a quicker turnaround on getting a loaner back to them and just, you know, to get that back because it's a little bit quicker in the repair process. Also, they, Chromebooks are really seamlessly integrated into what the Google suite for education, which is something that a lot of people use, and our teachers are able to take advantage of different instructional components of that with the Google Docs and the sheets and the slides and all of those things. And also, they're just more versatile and can adapt to various teaching styles. And they just access a lot wider range of apps available, and it's really, the possibilities are just endless with it. We also really need to stress the strong keyboarding skills in those lower grades. As they move up through the grade levels and when they come to third grade, we're taking assessments on that. So that transition of going from iPad to laptops is a little bit different. We want to get it in our hands a little bit early. So we make sure that they are familiar with it and they feel comfortable with it before they do go and try to take that state of test, or state assessment. So those are the reasons why. Behind that, I'm just wondering if any of you have any questions or thoughts on it from the switch over? I know a few of you have heard some things in the community, and I do appreciate that feedback. And so I just wanted to give you an opportunity if you have any other questions.
One less platform.
One less platform?
I know it's been a few years, but when I was the secretary of the bill up, it was when they lost their iPad, they got a Chromebook, and they would have no idea. So I mean, they walked out of there with a laptop and they would have not a clue, and then the teacher would need to reteach them.
So this is like they have the beauty of both worlds that they're going to live in, so. Yeah, you know. Any other thoughts?
Thank you very much. Would anyone else be going to the FAQ?
It actually is in the FAQ. I put it there. I pushed it out twice. A little more detailed, I, I did a little bit abbreviated version for you, but it's been in the community newsletter twice. Just so the community has an opportunity to also, they can reach out to me and ask questions about it too. Haven't had any, but yeah. Okay. Move on to ALC update. We're turning.
Yeah, just want to share a quick update. One, during the budget I mentioned, or the budget hearing, I mentioned the bond sale for this project along with the central office HVAC renovation. There's a limit on September 5th. Closing is to be on September 26th, so we should have all of our money on September 26th. We have received a good fake deposit of $52,000. The market was good to us. The issue is also paid a bond premium of $106,000. Take out the un-reared discount, so you have about, about $100,000. It's like on the top of the 5.2 million, so about 5.3 million was then the total proceeds. The cost of issuance is estimated about $135,000, so that leaves about $5.165 million for the project, which, as we know, we were expecting a little bit of that as the bids came a little bit higher for the ALC than what we anticipated, but lower on the HVAC side of things. But those were the numbers. As far as the interest rate, the, that interest rate that will be received is 2.92%, so it's pretty low. The interest cost over the term of the bonds will be estimated to be about $725,000. We're going to realize only $505,000, so it's significant savings to what the estimate was. The interest rate came out fairly well, and as mentioned before, these bonds will be paid off in December of 2020. So that's kind of where the VOK Financial is the, is the investment bank that purchased them. There were about six bids that were received, so it was a competitive sale. Again, I think things bode very well. Our Baker, Tilly, Ice Miller, they were all very pleased with the results of the sale. So that's, that's the bond sale. We did have our first construction meeting last week, last Thursday, and MKS, or Michael Kendry and Sons, plans to move equipment on site this coming Monday, start setting a silt fence and start, start moving some dirt. So we'll be discussing some times for a groundbreaking and so forth, because we don't have any of those things finalized yet. So that's the most recent information that we have regarding the construction of the ALC, this building. We have not met with PDP or product design piping yet. We don't expect them starting until probably next spring. So it's hard to start working on, you know, the HGC, we're taking down both the air conditioning and the heat as we're rounding out and moving into the heat season. So next spring will be much better time for that. Any questions?
More? Thank you. Teresa?
Yeah, very last one. Just want to say, board, you have really worked hard over the last three years to just become more transparent and a strong commitment to just listening to the concerns of the community, and we want to keep that going. So we do have some dates now for the state of the corporation address, which is October 22nd at 6:00. And I'll be getting with you as individuals on what that looks like for you. We will be reviewing our finances, a lot of what you heard here tonight, a little bit of more abbreviated fashion, academic data, and strategic plan updates. So you will also be having some staff and student demonstrations for the evening after the address is over. So anybody that wants to stay to learn about what we've been doing with our initiatives here at East Noble will get that opportunity to listen and learn from all our students and our teachers. So I guess 6:00. And then we're going to follow that up, doing another town hall meeting on December 3rd at 6:00 as well. Both of those events will be held at the middle school. We're only going to hold one town hall in the spring and one in the fall, or one in the fall and one in the spring. And we will just make sure that we give everyone an opportunity to hear their voice. We also know that many of you are meeting individually, one-on-one, small groups, and you continue to do that, take phone calls, emails, and update me and allow me to be able to put some things on the FAQ. We appreciate that feedback so I can make sure that we're answering those questions in the community promptly. And we continue to push out that FAQ and making sure that it's, it's updated as soon as we get some questions and trying to get through all of those. And just appreciate all of that. So I don't know if you have any thoughts, questions, feedback for me for what we kind of just went through with the town hall? And you kind of already guided me on what you wanted to do. And so I'm just kind of bringing that back to you for those states and see if you have any, any more thoughts on it. I am so thorough, you have nothing, right? Just excitement, that's all.
I think the three of us being gone, I think you put this on the October discussion item too, that way. So at least make sure we touch base with the three that aren't here to get their insight and input as well.
And a lot of that comes when I meet with you all in one. We have some great conversations about that, so. Well, I just personally want to commend the board for just trying to be active listeners in the community and getting that information back to me quickly so that I can address it in a way that is, is transparent. We put out there what we, the information that's necessary to help people understand. Thank you, appreciate you doing that.
Late items?
We have some late items.
Comments from the superintendent?
I just have a few, not too many tonight. Just want to take a minute to congratulate Denise Hashi. She is an instructional coach at Wayne Center. She was awarded the Indiana Lifetime Educator Excellent Award on Friday, September 6th in Indianapolis. It was an IDOE Excellent Gala Award Ceremony. I was there as encouraged to be able to go, along with Dr. Carol now, I should say. And it's just a great event. It really was amazing. They gave out, I think it was like $4 million in just different things, and Denise was able to get some money as well for, for that honor. So that was really exciting. She had no idea it was coming. Just very excited for her, and being named anything in the state at that level is just quite an honor. So we just applaud her and are so privileged to be able to work with her in that capacity and have her leading our teachers. So very exciting. Also, we have another really awesome piece of information. Congratulations to Damian Stark, junior at the high school. He was just awarded a New Tech Apprenticeship Opportunity for Indiana and it's for, and students in 10th through 12th grade. And he received a $5,000 scholarship to put towards IT or cybersecurity training and professional certifications. This was by the Hope Training Academy. It's all new, and Damian represents approximately 1% of the applicants who received this prestigious apprenticeship scholarship. So it's, it's very amazing that he got it, so we're just really proud of his accomplishments. So wonderful, wonderful work there. A lot of great things happening, so. A lot of great things happened at East Noble, so we'd like to be able to brag about that. Last thing is just thanking Brian for the budget and all the work that he puts into it year after year. And I know he stresses over it and it always comes out just fine. So thank you, Brian. We appreciate what you do with that, all your hard work there.
Missed a slide, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. None of those are perfect. That's it?
More comments or questions? Jen?
No, not today.
With that said, there will be no executive session tonight. We've got some board members who aren't here at this time. This meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, October sixteenth, here at the central office.